Commissioners, Court of Brazos County will meet in direct session on October the 24th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. We have Commissioner Condala attending on Zoom today. The first item on the agenda is invocation, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. And Commissioner Condala, you want to do those, and I'll do the flag, Chuck?
Sure.
Okay.
You all join me in prayer. Lord, and we pray, thank you for our lives, our, all the blessings put in every day for us. Lord, I beg for peace in our hearts, our interactions with each other, especially with the trio and the people here. Bless all those who fight for the good, that they help us to serve you with our lives, how we live with the blessing of it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and I think we've got three that wanted to speak. Ronnie Batulie.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I wanted to follow up on last week's my concern with Interstate 14 and Loop 214 running through the city of Curtain. Today, I'd like to express the human factor of our opposition to these major thoroughfares coming through our community. I feel the average person would find it reasonable to involve the local community, the governments of Curtain and Wixton Valley, and their citizens to provide input into what will happen with the thoroughfares in those communities. I can tell you without a doubt, citizens of both these communities do not want the powers that be from Bryan and College Station to force their wishes of interstates and thoroughfares going through our communities and destroying them. We are a community of longstanding ranches and farms, properties that have been in our families since the 1860s. I had the privilege to speak many times with Ms. Amy Curtain, who was a teacher and principal at Curtain School, whose father-in-law started this, the community of Curtain. I got to hear how this community started, and all the hard work and resources that went into forming our community. I also remember speaking to my grandmother, whose dead, my great-grandfather, purchased our land that I live on in 1881, over 140 years ago. There are many other families with the same story. This is why we are so passionate to save our community from urban sprawl, that the leaders to our west apparently want to inflict on us that even hearing from us and getting our input on our future. My request from you today is simple. Allow us to sit at the table, seek our input, and I ask you please to not deny it. If the current NPO map of 2017 becomes a reality, the city of Curtain will no longer exist, and that is a fact. Like our ancestors before us would expect, we will not allow that to happen. We owe it to our past ancestors and to our current and future residents. As I mentioned previously, I realize you, the court, do not have direct impact on these road placements, but you do have influence with the elected positions that you hold. I know some of you personally, and I know you share the love of this community as much as I do. I don't want to be an adversary in this issue, but I'm asking for your partnership in granting the citizens of Curtain and Wixton Valley a voice. And that voice says, keep I-14 and Loop 214 from splitting our community. I do encourage anyone out there listening that on October 25th, which is tomorrow, at the Legends Event Center in Bryan, TechDoc will be having a public meeting concerning I-14 and Loop 214. This is our first real opportunity to voice our opinion. I would recommend as many people attend as you can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ronnie. Karen Hawke.
Judge Peters, Commissioners, I just want to tell you, I appreciate very much the workshop that you're going to have later on this morning. It's a very, very important topic. There's a lot of talk among everybody, and very little scientific research being done into the issues on the machines. Yes, I know some of the people go, kind of take the ostrich approach. If you can't see it, it's not there. Well, that never works out well for the ostrich. Works out well for the predators. Just want to tell you, if you decide you want to expand, Ms. Hancock had told me there is some hand counting, if they want to expand it with volunteers, to more hand counting, to double-check things. Put my name down as a volunteer, unpaid, and I want to tell you, it does take courage to look behind a curtain when you don't know what's there. And I do salute this court for taking the time to peek behind that curtain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Cynthia Wiley.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I wanted to publicly thank you, our honor, for allowing us to participate in this workshop. You and I have had conversations about this issue, and I really want to publicly thank you for opening the door and allowing the public to come in and to bring Dr. Doherty in, so that we can all understand what's going on. Secondly, I wanted to thank my Commissioner, Steve Aldrich, for voting yes on the no new revenue. I wanted to publicly thank you for doing that and for not agreeing to the compromised property tax rate. I just have one comment on the rules of procedure which you guys adopted on the 10th. I know that part of your reasoning was, nobody took advantage of the public meeting after, and you reduced the four-minute time to three because nobody took advantage of it. But I've personally witnessed several people that were stopped at the three-minute mark. So I just want to say, you know, if it was no harm keeping it on, if you might reconsider putting that back on, so that for the people that do need those four minutes or do want to speak afterwards, has that opportunity. Last meeting, there was a lady, that she did want to talk, but she didn't know that she was not going to be allowed to at the end of the meeting. So that was a perfect example of, you know, if the meeting, if the, if the rules had not been changed, she would have had the opportunity. So that's my, that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 24. Number three is approval of Resolution 23-023, recognizing Tiffany Newton for 26 years of service to the citizens of Brazos County. You want a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
And thank her for her service.
Yeah, you bet.
We were trying to, we were trying to extend her time with the county.
Absolutely.
Well, you did that.
If y'all did not catch on to that.
Thanks for the clarification.
So I will, I'll read the resolution. Whereas on July 15th, 1997, Tiffany Newton began working as deputy clerk for Brazos County District Clerk. And whereas Tiffany Newton was humble and kind clerk that provided customer service to all of the many duties of a clerk. And whereas on August 21st, 2006, Tiffany Newton transferred to Brazos County Court of Law, number one, to serve as the administrative secretary and civil coordinator. And whereas Tiffany Newton extended excellent customer service to all other departments, agencies, and litigants, treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect. And whereas Tiffany Newton maintained the civil caseload, managed the court's expenses, and supported coworkers to assure the smooth operation of the office. And whereas Tiffany Newton always demonstrated the highest level of professionalism and service to Brazos County. And whereas Tiffany Newton has decided to retire, effective October 31st, 2023, to fulfill her dream of working in the medical field, since she was able to obtain her master's in May of 2023. Now therefore being resolved that Commissioners' Court of Brazos County takes this opportunity to honor Tiffany Newton and to thank her for her years of service to Brazos County, and to wish her the very best in her retirement in the next chapter of her life, may she find, as she serves as Bryan College Station, newly adopted by Commissioners' Court of Brazos County on the 24th day of October 2023.
Tiffany, you've got a speech to prepare.
You're welcome to speak.
We've allocated 20 minutes for your speech.
Her retirement party is Friday afternoon over in County Court of Law Number One, and you all are welcome to come over and wish her well. Thank you.
Do you want to take a picture with the court? Take the picture with the court.
Yeah.
You're welcome. I wish you the best of luck on your next career.
Congratulations, Tiffany. Again, congratulations.
Here's the career too.
After 26 years, she must have started when she was a teenager.
We will move to.
Did you vote on that?
Oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries unanimously. That was a reluctant aye, okay. Well, it took long enough to get the motion. I was, I guess I thought I'd taken the vote. Number four is approval of the appointment of Julie Schultz to the BVEDC Board of Directors. Term of appointment is October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say that if memory serves me correctly, Ms. Schultz was on the search committee that brought us Matt Prohaska. And I thought that was a great recommendation. I know it came from the committee, but I appreciated her service there, bringing us Matt Prohaska. I think he served the EDC and our community very well.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is discussion and consideration of possible burn ban extension. Jason.
Burn ban extension.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Jason Ware, Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator for Brazos County. So we've done some research over the last week or so with the volunteer fire chiefs. Three of the five are in favor of keeping the burn ban in place. Their concerns are that it is still dry. Currently, our numbers for Brazos County, as far as the drought index is concerned, we're at an average of about 477 as of this morning. Right now, we're at 650 on the high side, on the max, and that's very, that's south part of the county that's, that's seeing the, the really dry conditions. And then the minimum is 235, which is a very small portion of the northern, northwest side of the county. Our drought index, according to the U.S. Drought Monitor, is that we're still considered to be an extreme drought. Recently, over the, over the weekend, one of the volunteer departments responded to a five-acre fire that was started because of a burn ban violation, and it was difficult to control because it was in some wooded areas and spread quickly. We do have some rain forecast over the next week. I think the highest percentage is about 50% at this point. We still have a few days left till we get there, but we, we, you know, it's not going to be drought-busting rain more than likely. So there is, according to the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service website, there is a, still a small bullseye right over Brazos County, where we're showing fuel moistures to be very low. So we could still see an active wildfire. So I'll be here if y'all have any further questions.
Okay.
Judge, I, I think we continue the burn ban.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah. If we get the rain, we can always talk about it next week, but I think we keep it on.
Okay, so I'll need, was I hearing the motion? Where was it?
I move that we continue the burn ban.
Second. Motion made and seconded to extend the burn ban. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
And, you know, Homeland Security, we caught a little bit of grief from the surrounding counties because they've all lifted their bans, but I was proud that the comment that came from our emergency management folks was, well, y'all do what y'all need to do, and in Brazos County, we're going to do what we need to do.
Yeah, and I mean, if you watch those things, that rain seemed to go around Brazos County for whatever reason. So we may not have had the rain that others have.
Well, no, I'd sure like to see the rain. Maybe, maybe that is kind of like washing your car, whatever, maybe it'll.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I washed mine yesterday.
Okay, number six is approval of mutual termination agreement between Brazos County and Visad Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following community support contracts for FY 2024.
Move approval A through G.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve A through G. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is award of RFP 23-600-3, Bond Engineering Design Services for Lyrd Road. Recommended award is RG Miller Engineers, Inc.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. And this is from the bond money that was passed by the citizens of Brazos County. I guess it was a year ago, and it's for the design of Lyrd Road, which if, for all of you that attended the fair this weekend, this past Saturday, there was a lot of traffic backed up. I'm told by a couple of folks that it was like a 30, 40-minute wait to get into the place. So this improvement, when it, when it happens, is going to improve it for the expo out there, too, but it's a entryway into Bryan and something that they would like to see happen, too. Charge you on it.
I don't have to say anything, Judge. If y'all have any questions or anything, we'd be happy to answer anything specifically, but we, this is done in conjunction with TechDoc.
Right.
They were on the evaluation committee. They helped go through and create the matrix for evaluation and actually did the evaluation. So we look forward to getting started on this and going forward with the citizens' wishes to get this taken care of.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. You might stand there a minute. There may be a question on the next one. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is award of RFP 23-600-4, Bond Engineering Design Services of Harvey Road. Recommended award is Lambstar Engineering LLC.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. And this one is another, it came from the bond money that was passed. It's Harvey Road. It is a gateway that College Station was supportive of this project happening to widen Harvey Road, and this will get the design done for TechDoc.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, and, and I wanted to say also, I think it's great that the way we're going about this, is that we're picking engineering firms that will be from start to completion. There will not be any interruptions. There will not be any interruption. They're on a project, the design, hopefully that will work to work, because I know we've got some issues where we've changed engineers, and as a result of that, the new engineer right, you know, rightfully wants to go back and look at the other, the engineering that had been done up to the point of when they took over that project. So I think this is great by picking an engineer per project. I think it'll, I think it'll mitigate some of that opportunity where we've got to pay for the same real estate twice.
If I may, Judge, commissioners, there has been one small minor tweak that is on the Exhibit A of this contract, Section 1.2. We took out some additional fluff that was in that, and all it has to do with is invoicing, and we made it more generic, and so I have a copy here for y'all.
It's the very first sentence. I apologize, Mr. Condolee. I'll give the copy to you.
Just hold it up.
I'm too short for the camera, but...
I hear you.
So the, the very first sentence, it had some additional verbiage in there, and so we made it more concise and just said that the engineers will submit each invoice in a format acceptable to the county and the state. So that is the gist of it. That was requested by ITS Innovative Transportation Services, our consultant that helped us go through this process, and so per their wishes, we, we made this more concise to give the county flexibility to make sure, and it just has to do with invoicing. It's, that's all it is. So that is the only tweak that has changed a very small amount from what was contained online and in the Commissioners Court package.
So do we need to amend this?
I, I would request that the approval be with that small change.
Okay.
Move approval with that change.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve with the change. Did we already have a motion and a second before? So maybe, who made that motion, and we'll get them to... Okay, so you made the original, so you're going to add that this change be...
Yes.
...part of your motion?
Yes. Amend, amend my original motion to include the change.
I will second the amended motion. Okay. So now we've got the motion and a second to approve with this change.
And I, I wanted to also say, too, it's good to hear that we've got a consultant that's doing things like this as well as all the other things that they're doing to help us out on these things and advocate for us. That's why we hired.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is award of RFP 23-608, INGN Road Recommendation. Reconstruction Recommended award is Larry Young Paving, Inc. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of Contract 24-064 for Talent Management Software with Power DMS, Inc., for the Sheriff's Office.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of Agreement 24-065 for Clear Proflex with Thompson Rogers for the Sheriff's Office.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of Renewal Bid, number 24-071R, Seal Co. with Clark Construction of Texas.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of Contract 24-073 for Oracle Cloud Services.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of CIP 24-530 Check Scanning Software for Brazos County Tax Office with RT Lawrence.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is replat of 711 Ranch Phase 1 Lot 1R-1 to Request Setback Variance Sites Located Precinct 1. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of recent middle of final plat of Prairie Ridge Estates Phase 2, which corrects a title block error on previous plats submitted up to the October 10, 2023 Commissioners Court Agenda Sites Located Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is consider and take action on the Metro FiberNet LLC Utility Permit to install 5,700 feet of conduit and fiber optic line within the right-of-way of Mumford Road, City of Bryan's, the city, Bryan City Limit Line to Keystone Drive, Sites Located Precinct 4.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is consider and take action on Metro FiberNet LLC Utility Permit to install 2,500 feet of conduit and fiber optic cable within the right-of-way of West 28th Street from Quality Park Lane to 2,500 feet southeast, Sites Located Precinct 4.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 22/23, budget amendments 51, or 53.01 to 53.05, and FY 23/24 budget amendments 4.01 to 4.02.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is claim of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 812-5362 through Claim Number 812-5478, and Claim Number 9008814 through Claim Number 9008862.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We'll skip down to number 25 is an acknowledgment of FY 2023-24 Budget Tactiles by Fund as of October 18, 2023, and an acknowledgment of FY 2023-24 Contingency Budget Tactiles as of October 18, 2023. And number 26 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. We have 36 juveniles in detention, 25 males, 11 females, and 29 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Linda. 27 on sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. 734 in custody this morning, 623 men, 111 women, 51 on electronic monitoring.
Thank you, Sheriff. 28 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
I just wanted to remind everybody that early voting has started for constitutional amendments and school board. We have our five early voting locations. The McLeod Center on William to O'Brien, Arena Hall, the College Station Utilities on Baron Road, and the MSC.
And Galilee.
And Galilee Baptist Church. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted to remind everyone again of the TechStop meeting tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Legends Event Center. This is TechStop looking for input from the community with regard to I-14 and II-14 plans as they've started the feasibility study. And also, when you're there, there's typically a form that you fill out where you put your comments and name and contact information, and I would just urge everyone to fill that out as well, so they're not just hearing verbal. They have written statements from citizens as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, I'd just like to congratulate Expo and everybody that was involved in the fair. It was a great event. Had the opportunity to visit out at the event and watch what we're doing with security, with using drones, and I was very impressed with that. I think that the more we can do that and we can keep people, where we can not put officers in harm's way is a great way to go about it, but I wanted to thank the deputy for inviting me out there to that, but just really wanted to say thank you for, to everybody at the Expo for creating just a great event, and I hope everybody had the opportunity to go out there and see and experience what's going on in Brazos County, just have a great time.
Yeah, it was a great turnout. They're already planning next year, so. Any other announcement? Okay, we'll move back up to, and to number 23 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087 for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And we'll, of course, need Coester, Sherrill, and Kimberly, the attorneys. I don't think there was anybody else needed to be in. The time is 10:33, and when we get through with that executive session, I don't think it'll take too long, but we'll come back out and adjourn, break just a minute, and give them time to switch over, and then we'll come, we'll do the workshop. Time's 10:33.
Oh, it's always cold.
It's always cold in here. I'm going to always have a sweater in here.
Okay, the Commissioners Court is coming out of executive session. There's no action to be taken, so the next item to adjourn is to...
Prior to us adjourned, I'd just like to point out that we're being visited today by Rita Coches from TAC, and it's always great to see you here in Brazos County. Thank you.
Yeah, glad to have you here, Rita.
Judge, can you tell us the time?
Yeah, it's 10:50, and we will adjourn the, the regular meeting, and I, as soon as y'all are ready to move to the next meeting, we'll, we'll get the workshop started. Okay.